Okay, it is six thirty. We're gonna call the regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. We have a quorum. Uh, first up, we have the invocation. We have a special guest from with us for today from Saint George. Mr. Ram Lopez, if you'll please, uh, lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Let us pray. Gracious God, as we come closer to that day that we, as a community, offer you thanks for all the blessings that you've given us. The blessing of our freedom, the blessing of a wonderful country and community to be a part of. We thank you for all those blessings, and we thank you for your great love. How you tend to all our needs. How you help us to grow more and more into your likeness. So that we may do your will on earth as it is in heaven. With grateful hearts for our life together, we ask that you send down upon those who hold office in our city of Castle Hills. The spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose. They may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all the people. Who make up our wonderful community. Through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you for being here with us, Mr. Lopez. Uh, next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harada, will you lead us? Thank you, Mr. Harada. I, uh, had to pick on you a little bit considering the next item we have on the agenda is recognition of your thirty years of service to the city of Castle Hills. Uh, many of y'all know that, uh, Mr. Harada's been running Public Works and sanitation for a while now and, and I think the reality is that's the difference between, uh, being a part of the city of San Antonio and being Castle Hills as the premier services that we have. I think the majority of people enjoy trash service four times a week and, and Mr. Harada knows the city of Castle Hills like the back of his hand. And so, uh, I would personally like to thank you, Mr. Harada, for everything that you've done for our city, and we look forward to your next thirty years. Mr. Rappley.
Yes, uh, Mayor. I let, I let Mr. May in too, so. There we go. There we go.
It's not showing up on here. I don't know why. There it goes.
Here we go. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that's just, uh, a few pictures. Obviously, we have Rick, uh, uh, just a few years ago picture. I think that was about three years ago, Rick. Uh, that's still on the website because he insists on having that picture. And then obviously Rick at work supervising the mayor with a pothole. Uh, and then, um, part of his animal control collecting snakes. So, um, Rick, Rick does it all, but I, I wanted to take a moment as part of this agenda tonight and take this opportunity to recognize, uh, Rick Harada for his thirty years of service for the city of Castle Hills. Of those thirty years, Mr. Harada spent twenty years as public director. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Harada over the past five years. Rick is dependable, dedicated, and continually demonstrates the "I will take care of it" attitude. The Public Works Department has many functions and array of services, and what I can tell you about Rick is he makes these services, he ensures they are met with certain expectations and a level of quality residents have come to expect in Castle Hills. Rick has been through countless city managers over the years. I frankly think he lost count. Uh, regardless, the institutional knowledge Mr. Harada possesses is priceless, and one day the successor to Mr. Harada will need very, very large shoes. I've always said during my time here, I wish I had a million Ricks to get things done. His employees would just look at me like, that's okay, one is enough. Mr. Harada, uh, arise early to ensure sanitation crews get going on the routes and then has the projects of the day ready to go in the afternoon. He also, uh, works projects on the weekends. Um, I asked Rick this year specifically, uh, to get something done for us, not at Public Works, not necessarily the city, but something for us here at City Hall. One example, I asked him to approve the room behind y'all, uh, the highest, which made it into a, an actual staff break room to actually have a sink, cabinets, and a ceiling drop, and it was since it was like an oven in there. Rick spent a number of weekends in a row, his, his, his sort of free time on the weekends, even though he's here every weekend, uh, to get this project done. This is why I want to highlight this particular project. Because Mr. Harada did this on weekends to modify this room for the employees at City Hall. This is why on many occasions here at City Hall or around the city, Rick demonstrates the "I will take care of it" attitude. Whether this is related to Public Works, the department, the Commons, City Hall, Police or Fire Departments, he does what is best for the city of Castle Hills on a daily basis. I thank you, Mr. Harada, for your service, your dedication, and commitment to the city of Castle Hills. Uh, tomorrow, we're having a staff luncheon, uh, Thanksgiving luncheon, but it'll be in conjunction of celebrating, uh, Rick's, uh, thirty years. So we'll have many more pictures like this, uh, ready to illustrate to everyone tomorrow. So, Rick, on behalf, I'd like to give you this. Come on up, Rick. You're gonna have to say a few words, Rick. Can't get away. So we got this, we got this plaque here. It's a, it's a large plaque, you know, for, for thirty years, and it just says, "In recognition of your thirty years of service and dedication to the city of Castle Hills, November first nineteen ninety-three to November first two thousand twenty-three." There you go, Rick.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord.
Also, we, we also got Rick, uh, he is always punctual, um, and he, um, of course, never has a watch on, but we wanted to make sure we got him something that actually, uh, provides. Uh, I'll let you open it. It's, it's a watch. We engraved it. It just says thirty years Castle Hills, and that's from, from all of us, Rick. Yes. Come on, come on, take the picture of the mayor and the plaque.
A cou- a couple of words. In two thousand and three, when I came as supervisor, uh, as Mr. Rappley says, I've been here for a little while, but in two thousand and three, when I was giving that hand of, uh, Public Works Director, I told everybody, I'm gonna do the best of my job, and I'll continue hopefully to serve every one of y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Rick, for everything that you do. Uh, many of y'all have seen that, you know, sometimes track, trash trucks are, are down for service, and the crew will go out there with a trailer just to make sure the trash gets picked up, brings it back to Public Works, dumps it there, and then they'll go and take it out to the landfill. Uh, and I think that's just kind of indicative of the type of, uh, culture that Rick has instilled at Public Works with making sure that we're giving the residents everything they deserve plus some. So again, Rick, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for everything that you do. Uh, next, we're gonna proceed to, uh, the citizen comments. First up, we have Ms. Norma McClellan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Chiefs. Um, first, I want to thank you for all of the work that's been done to improve our city. Uh, my husband and I have truly loved living here, and we love to see the progress that has been made. We'd like to add one more thing, a little small project, now that some of the larger ones are kind of planned. And that is the alleyway behind, um, Sheffield and Sir Arthur Court. It is terrible, and I think, uh, a couple of you have experienced it. It's kind of like a, I showed one individual, uh, our vehicles that looked like we had been mudding, and it was just from going to, um, Oak Oil to, uh, our house, because it's an alley driveway. So just wanted to see if there was just any possibility of in the future adding uh, someone or get asking someone to, uh, check out the alleyway and see what could be done, because the ruts are pretty bad. And my poor car never is clean. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Frank Paul.
Frank Paul, one twelve Shalamar. You'll have to excuse me. I have an early morning flight, but I felt it was important. I wanted to say, we will find a way. That's always been Rick's model. We will find a way. I got better pictures about Rick. I have one with him sitting, lying on the ground underneath garbage truck changing the oil. I've lived here for thirty, for, excuse me, forty-five years. I'm counting on you, thirty. For forty-five years, uh, you know, I moved here when I was five. Well, I'm not good at math, but anyway, uh, thank you, Rick. Uh, you've, you've, you're a great asset to the city, and I just wanted to tell you, I really appreciate all that you've done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay, Council, next up, we have the consent agenda. Do you have a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. May, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, my Ms. Haley, any discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Uh, new business. First up, we have public hearing on application requests from David W. Hanley and Marion Padalis Hanley to change the zoning of her property at two zero two Antler Drive, Castle Hills, Texas seventy-two one three, more particularly described as County Block five six eight two E, Block one, Lot twenty-three, C H C B one oh three, from a single family to be duplex zoning. It is six forty-two, and we will open the public hearing. If there's nobody to speak on that, we will close the public hearing at six forty-two. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen, and a recommendation from the zoning commission on an application request from David W. Hanley and Marion Padalis Hanley to change the zoning of the property at two zero two Antler Drive, Castle Hills, Texas seventy-two one three. More particularly described as County Block five six eight two E, Block one, Lot twenty-three, C H C B one zero three, from a single family to be duplex zoning. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This, uh, item was before the zoning commission, last Tuesday night on November seventh, and it was unanimously approved, uh, for the zoning change, uh, from the A to the, uh, B duplex, um, based on the actual property. Um, the applicants are here. If you have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, Mr. Joyce.
Mayor Council, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen as fully described in item six point two.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second, I'm Ms. Haley. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Next, we have discussion and possible action and application from Atlantis Senior Living twelve LLC for a replat. The purp- proposed replat will create two lots from one lot. The existing lot being eleven point seven five six seven acre tract of land, commonly known as Gardens of Castle Hills. Twelve zero seven Jackson Keller Road, Castle Hills, Texas. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, the, uh, this is a replat here. Obviously, the proposal will create two lots from one. Uh, the applicant was reviewed, and our city engineers, our Dura, reviewed this and provided a letter. It's in the backup there of approval, and the applicants are here in case you have any questions based on their, uh, repl- replat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce.
Are, are the engineers here, Mr. Rappley? Yes, I have an engineering question, please.
Yes, I'm Rick Sumoto with our Dura.
Thank you, Rick. It's mentioned in the, in the narrative about drainage that it's surface drains onto Jackson Keller. Could you please tell us where the water goes from that point?
Well, when we're doing the replat, we're just making sure that nothing is changing from the existing conditions. We're not solving any, there's, since there's not doing any improvements, when they're not, um, improving the drainage conditions, we're just, they're just leaving them as is.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is we've just completed a comprehensive plan that identifies a lot of issues on Jackson Keller, and the drainage is one of them. So I thought, do you have any idea which direction it flows?
It's flowing towards, some of it's flowing towards the back.
The back?
I mean, I would need to look at the whole site, but we just, when we look at drainage for plating purposes, we're mainly looking for changes in impervious cover. And anything is gonna be changed. I mean, it doesn't make sense to, I guess, change the drainage of a grocery store, you know, just because they're gonna change something. You know, if we're gonna remodel, so.
I'm just trying to figure out where it goes.
And, oh, well, um, Mr. Joyce, if I may jump in on that, I guess what, you know, if I can, I'm wrong, please correct me. But I think what you're trying to say is we're increasing or decreasing the amount of pervious cover. And so we just want to make sure that potentially, uh, we want to make sure that it doesn't pose issues if it's developed, or that be something that would be discussed for the development down the road?
There were no, um, they're saying there was no development proposed.
Okay, but hypothetically, down the road, I guess we're just trying to make sure that we don't create drainage issues.
That would probably be done during the construction process.
Got you.
Construction permit process.
Part, part of the review, uh, review plan.
Right.
Yeah.
No, that's fine. I, I understand that the.
I know there's a drainage ditch. I know there's a drainage ditch in the middle. There's a drainage easement there.
Right.
Um, trying to recall, you know, all the details of it, but.
Place, because the drainage ditch, it begins and ends and doesn't seem to connect anything. And this is up at the, I guess it's the east end. And I'm just curious if this is feeding that drainage ditch. It's okay. I understand that your analysis is limited when you're just doing a plat. I was just hoping that there might be.
Yeah, they were, they said there's no improvements.
Yeah.
Being done.
Right. Understand.
So our main comment was having to use multiple driveway, uh, use one driveway as for both properties until the other property builds, uh, its own driveway.
Right.
That was the biggest thing that we saw in the review.
Okay.
We don't, I mean, during a plat process, we don't try to fix the drainage of a site just for them to survey their land.
No, but I thought there might be a drainage plan in mind, but, but that's fine. That's okay. I understand.
It's only for improvements.
Understand. Thank you.
Mayor, if you'd like, the applicants are here. If you have any questions to them directly on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do we have any motions? Mr. Joyce.
I ask another dumb question.
No such thing.
Of the, a question for the owner, please, folks. Your lot, uh, fifty-two, as the plat proposes, is a very unusual shape. Is, is there a logic to it?
Um, the, um, because of the current zoning on the property, the back part of the property is zoned for B duplexes. Up the line of duplexes.
Okay.
And then the main, uh, part of the, by the way, I'm Mark McKinney with, uh, with Atlantis twelve.
Thanks for joining us.
Danny, who was one of the partners. Um, the main part of the, uh, of the, of the property is where the, there is an abandoned building on that site, which you drive by, you see that.
Right.
Um, so that main piece, um, is zoned, as you know, as C. C two, uh, not C two, but, uh, C for low-rise, uh, multifamily. So that would be an, an ideal place to, to do that. Uh, and then the duplexes, uh, don't take up much room. It's like a long, narrow piece along the back fence.
Yeah.
So, um, under the current, uh, zoning, we think those are, are, uh, still applicable uh, zonings to maintain, um, when we possibly do something in the future. What we're doing is planning ahead. That's what we're doing with this, and, um, we are not changing anything on the property at all. I'm not adding anything. We're not doing any improvements. So, it's okay.
Very well. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. May. I keep on forgetting you're down there, Mr. May.
Yep, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, this may be intuitive, but from the packet, I'm not seeing how it's supposed to be split. It's eleven point seven six six seven acre. Uh, it, and one building's gonna be on one side and two on the other. But what does that result in? I mean, aren't we gonna have to have that for the record?
Mr. Rappley.
Sorry, I'm looking for the packet right now in the slots.
I, I do have a quick question for the owners, um, and if I'm out of line, please let me know, but, uh, it appears that the property is going to dogleg behind Lot fifty-one.
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
And so, given the fact that we have all of our, um, setbacks, wouldn't that kind of make that section of land not really effective?
Uh, yes, there's a twenty-five foot setback, um, on the fence line. And, um, we have, uh, approximately ninety feet, uh, from the setback, um, to the, uh, to the property line along that dogleg. Um, I'm a, uh, builder and developer, uh, doing, um, duplexes, uh, fourplexes up in the northern, North Texas area. So we, we can put product on that, and other builders can put product on that, uh, on that dogleg going down that rear fence. Um, we did a project in Denton, Texas where, um, excuse me, where we had a, a drive fire lane going in the rear and, uh, uh, rear loading into the, into the, um, fourplexes. So, um, but that's, that's way in the, in the future, but there's, um, there's plenty of room, or it can also be used for amenities. Can put, um, a pool back there, pickleball courts, um, um, an amenity center back in that area. There's plenty of room for to put the amenities back there, and then you've got the main living areas occupied on the main square. If you look at the, and I'm sure you have a copy of the, uh.
What's the width of that dogleg, sir?
Uh, it's, uh, at the far end, it's eighty-six feet.
And so setbacks twenty-five each way, so you have, what is that, thirty-six feet? It's usable there in the middle of it?
No, no, eighty-six minus twenty-five would be fifty, uh, fifty-one.
So you wouldn't have a setback on the front, though?
Have a ten-foot setback on the front.
So thirty-five, so you have fifty-one feet.
So we have forty-one feet, yeah. So that leaves room for a, a drive in the back. Uh, it's, you can put a product, uh, on the ground that is approximately forty feet deep. And, um, the product that would be fifteen to eighteen hundred square feet. So I'm just projecting right now.
Sure.
And then that would, it, that really happens with the permitting, because whoever is gonna develop this property would back before you guys, before Council, anyway.
Yeah, I, I see that as a tight squeeze, but that's not my property to develop. I understand.
Yeah.
The, the scope of what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Ms. Haley.
When we start talking about duplexes or other construction, does that, what does that do to our eighteen hundred square foot minimum construction requirement for residential property in the city, if that's still the case? There is a, I mean, the last time I looked at the code for residential, there was a minimum requirement of eighteen hundred square feet to build.
I don't believe that's.
Residential.
I don't believe that that's applicable for, uh, mo- low-rise multifamily.
Okay, but I'm talking about the place in the back that you're talking about duplexes.
Or duplexes, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Snow, you had a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted to answer Mr. May's question. Uh, the plat drawing, although it's not regular shaped lots, as I think one of the other members of the council mentioned, uh, Lot fifty-one is six point zero three six seven acres, and Lot fifty-two is five point six two acres. Uh, it is a little hard to see on this rather small light-colored busy plat, but clearly delineates two lots, Lot fifty-one and fifty-two, each roughly six acres.
Council, do we have any motions? Mr. Joyce.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the plat proposed by Atlanta Senior Living LLC for a replat, uh, which, which proposes two lots from one. As otherwise described in item six point three.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Second.
We have a second, my Ms. Haley, and just for, um, going on the record, I know now that I look at this in hearing, the possible intent, I, I do have concerns going forward. If multifamily was developed back there, the lack of, uh, pervious cover could present issues potentially to the neighbors in the back, and so, uh, just so that anybody, whether the current owners know or the future owners know, that's gonna be a priority, that the city's gonna make sure that we don't uh, put the existing landowners in any kind of a situation where their property's gonna be damaged. So I'm not sure how that's mitigated, but I'd just like to put it on the record that that's gonna be a consideration before this council approves anything uh, at a later date. So we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Okay, next up, we have discussion and possible action. I propose them from Maguire Iron Inc. for the exterior painting and related services to the elevated water tank at West Avenue. So you may have noticed that our water tower tank at West Avenue and, uh, Northwest Military were, uh, was renovated last year. And when we went to ask Saws about having the name back on the tank, they said that there was no policy that it was allowed. Uh, taking a step back, the reason that we're here is because that was a bare-met tank at one point, and our name had just kind of been there forever. Uh, we had reached out to the folks at Saws, and they said that they didn't have a provision in place. So the city manager and, uh, Mr. Isbrand and I went down to the Board of Trustees meeting at Saws and kindly asked them to revise their, uh, consider revising their board policy to allow signage, and so I'm, I'm happy to say that I think that we see a light at the end of the tunnel. So, uh, in anticipation of a, um, policy by Saws allowing us to put the city of Castle Hills back up there, uh, Mr. Rappley reached out to a company, and we have a proposal. So the idea is that we wanted to take this proposal to Saws and let them know that we've done our due diligence and that we're ready for their approval so that we can get Castle Hills back up on the water tower. So, uh, thank you to the city manager for keeping the ball moving on this one. We don't have a lot of tall buildings or structures in Castle Hills. So I think it's nice to have our name back up on, uh, the one that we at least used to have it up on. Mr. Rappley?
I know, I think, Mayor, that, again, Saws current, currently has a policy, um, that doesn't allow for entities to have their names on it, so, um, as the mayor mentioned, we're hoping that Saws, uh, takes action to change this policy next month, hopefully. Uh, I wanted to get the ball rolling, be proactive, have a proposal ready, um, for Saws that's approved by this body of council that gets the ball rolling quicker. Um, they'll still have to review the contractor, the proposal. They may want their logo on there. Um, you can see the rendering in the back that says, "In partnerships with San Antonio Water System." Uh, that may change, because they may want their logo on there. Um, but that's something that will cross the bridge at the time with Saws as well. Um, I do know that we need certain language as part of accepting this agenda item. Uh, I would ask if you made a motion to make sure this is contingent upon Saws' written consent to allow the city to place their name on the elevated tank by passing this agenda item and this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have, uh, any motion for a discussion? Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have uh, any motion for a discussion?
Looks like it'd be a lot of reading on that tower by the time you have partnership with Saws and Saws and all that, but I think it's great to be able to do it. And I will move that we, we accept this proposal contingent on the approval by Saws to do it. It seems like are we, we're not obligating ourselves for any money. I know I'm backtracking off the motion, but we're not, this is just a proposal and just to say we're ready when you are. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I move that we do exactly that.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Uh, Mr. Smith, I see you keying up.
I'll second that.
Second.
Work, Mr. Schnell?
Yes.
And, and Ms. Haley, I agree with you. Um, I think that we could probably tweak the logo a little bit so it doesn't all run together. As like a paragraph up there, but having Castle Hills and then in partnership with Saws at the bottom, so that we're still paying homage to our partners that um, have made this possible. But we'll, we'll let Mr. Rappley iron out those details. Uh, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Okay, next we have a discussion, possible action ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen dash A. To add a three-way stop sign at Halbar and Northcrest to the list of stop streets. Uh, so the street Halbar, I'm sorry, Northcrest has quite a bit of traffic that using it as a cut through. We have met uh, multiple times with residents that live in that area. We have a couple here with us tonight. And the idea is that we are going to uh, begin a progressive way of trying to mitigate traffic using that as a cut through. Uh, I will personally say that I think that there are a lot of streets that get used as a cut through. And so I'm, I'm very sensitive to this, but the reality is Northcrest is different because it's a cut through to four-ten. Uh, the uh, other variable that's at play is that Tech dot is making, is having discussions about making some changes to the four-ten uh, onramps and exit ramps. So the city manager and I have talked with our city engineers and we felt that this was a low-impact way of taking the first step to show the residents that we are willing to invest and try to mitigate traffic in the area. But without making too much of an investment just yet in case uh, Tech dot has some upcoming changes in the future. So uh, what you have in front of you is approval to officially codify this as a uh, street or intersection where a stop sign is warranted. Mr. Rappley?
Uh, correct, Mayor. So this would actually have a three-way stop at Halbar and Northcrest. There's already one at Banyan in Northcrest, but this will sort of hopefully curve, deter uh, speeding. Uh, it will provide an extra stop. Uh, it seems a, a short-term solution. Um, and like you had mentioned, we're going to be meeting again with the residents for hopefully some longer-term solution uh, on Northcrest, which may involve bringing something back to council for consideration and or cost at that time. But um, I think this is a, a quick solution to add a three-way stop. Mr. Harada has already ordered the flashing red stop signs for this intersection as well as Banyan and Northcrest. Uh, those will be installed hopefully in the next week or so as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have a motion? Ms. Haley.
I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen dash A to add a three-way stop sign at Halbar and Northcrest to the list of stops, stop streets.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any discussion?
I think it's great if we have to slow things down and that's a pretty easy way to do it and, and mitigate how we can and improve safety. I think it's a great thing.
I couldn't agree more. I think it's a great first step and hopefully this uh, helps accomplish what the residents would like to see and I'm sure they will let us know if they see a difference. Mr. Smith?
I, I just want to say that uh, I live on Carrollwood, right near Carrollwood and Banyan. And I've noticed a, a big difference in people slowing down with the, with the flashing, uh, flashing stop signs. And I think this is a good idea and it's a relatively low-impact way of taking care of it.
Agreed. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, next up, we have a discussion, possible action on resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash fourteen authorizing the city to enter an interlocal agreement between the city of Castle Hills and San Antonio Water System to facilitate billing services and authorizing the city manager to execute such agreement. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a interlocal agreement between um, us and the San Antonio Water System for that billing service. Uh, apparently there was one executed in two thousand twelve. At the end of the five years, two thousand seventeen, uh, it was never renewed or brought forward for uh, a new interlocal agreement. Uh, so it just went year to year. So Saws is asking us to put together a new agreement for billing services. Uh, not much has changed language-wise and the terms. Um, this was reviewed by Ryan Henry's office, uh, this agreement. And so um, this will just actually move forward and put a new um, agreement in place for these billing services, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel, Mr. Joyce?
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution or approve, rather, resolution number two oh two-three dash eleven dash fourteen authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Castle Hills and San Antonio Water System to facilitate billing services and authorizing the city manager to execute such agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. May, was that a second?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, Mr. Smith?
Um, I just wanted to ask Mr. Rappley. I know there's um, provisions in here for billing errors and I just want to, just wanted to check to see, or how often are we checking up on the billing or doing an audit on the billing just to make sure it's accurate?
I, I don't know, Ms. Davis, is that part of the normal auditing services?
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to check up on that. Okay, thank you.
Now for the discussion, on favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on a change order request for a street improvement project phase three, Relletto. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, this is a change order request. Um, the original scope did not include um, reconstruction from South Garden View to Lemonwood. Um, our previous engineers had scoped out this project and cost. Uh, and that's what we used for when we went to um, the bond for elections. And so this section was actually omitted as part of their scope. Um, now that we are doing that section, it makes sense to just incorporate a change order. Uh, continue in doing that section, um, since they're already mobilized. And I, I, in the back of the packet, Mr. Joyce asked me about this. So the original budget of this project and the cost estimates was two point three million. And we bid it out at one point nine million. So we are still under the actual budget and or estimated costs um, in order to have this change order um, built into the budget of a hundred and fifty thousand. And I think I have one point nine and I was off because I had one point six as the bid award, but it's actually one point nine and then the budget for these nine streets that are being done, uh, it was two point three million.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce?
Just to clarify, Mr. Rappley, we're, so we're working with about four hundred thousand dollars additional funds.
Based on our budget or.
Based on the budget and the actual bid.
Yes.
And so this change order is going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand roughly, so we're still well in the good.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, we, we do have a couple more change orders that are probably brought towards, for council's review and approval. Um, they're at a, a much smaller scale and cost. Uh, but there's some things that have come up that uh, will need to be done through a change order process. And I'll provide those to city council for approval, uh, hopefully at the next meeting, if not January.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a motion? Ms. Haley?
I move that we approve the change order request for the street improvement project phase three on Relletto Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Uh, Mr. Smith, is that a second?
That's a second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think this is a great idea. It's a small strip of land that's, a long, small strip of road that would be the only unimproved. And so doing this, we help uh, finish that area off completely. Uh, so all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion and possible action on authorizing the city manager to advertise for requests for proposals for a twenty twenty-three financial auditing services. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, our auditors that are currently Martinez, Rosario, and I believe it's uh, Garza are on their third year of auditing for the city of Castle Hills. Uh, we went into a three-year contract uh, three years ago. Um, they were scheduled to bring the audit tonight, actually. Um, but they've had some staffing and, and um, some COVID issues, so uh, that kind of put off uh, that being presented tonight. It will be presented at the December meeting. However, um, I wanted to get ahead of it and go out for RFPs because uh, again, we're in the third year, uh, and we need to go out for proposals for auditors again.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel, Ms. Ms. Haley?
Whenever you're ready.
I'm ready.
I move that we authorize the city manager to advertise for requests for proposals for the twenty twenty-three financial auditing service.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Smith or Mr. Joyce, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, next up, we have announces on mayor and city council members on items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
Um, I, I'd just like to reiterate our thanks to Mr. Harada for his years of service and just as a, on a personal note. Um, I'm, I'm an early riser and I'm out and about early in the morning and I believe it was six o'clock on a Sunday, Saturday morning. I drove by City Hall and Mr. Harada was just arriving to work. That's the kind of dedication he shows and uh, with no fanfare, he just shows up and does a, and does an excellent job. And I want to thank you for that, Mr. Harada. Um, and other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Haley?
I'll say that too, Mr. Harada. You've been a champion for years and steady and faithful and pleasant and helpful and kind. And you've helped animals and people and you make our community better and we appreciate you. Thank you. For thirty years means a lot. Now, mark your calendars for Sunday evening, December third. We're going to have lighting of the lights of the commons from four thirty to six thirty. Lots of fun activities and I'm so happy that we have the community spirit and organizations that we have that reach out to our community and, and bring people together. And I hope you'll join in.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, again, reiterate what everyone said about Rick's performance because it's not just a performance. Uh, he genuinely cares for the fellow workers and for the city. And uh, I, I so much appreciate that kind of spirit. I look forward to seeing everyone at the tree lighting and have a thanks, have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Well, I guess I'm going to join the chorus, Rick. I don't know how you say thank you for thirty years of incredible dedication and hard work. Uh, you drove every truck there was, you helped the guys, you, you know, it's been difficult the last couple of years with personnel and you, you've struggled through that and still are shining. So thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Uh, Rick, I think I've said everything I could possibly say and everybody said it four times over. Um, thank you. Uh, I also want to share some good news. I've heard that there are a couple of um media stations throughout the country that have been in Castle Hills. One was here last week at Clementine and another one is probably going to be at Billia in December. So if you haven't made it out to those restaurants, I would do it before those air uh, in late December because they're about to get very popular and bring lots of light and attention to the city of Castle Hills. Uh, thank you so much for being here with us tonight and uh, I hope you enjoyed it. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
Smith, all in favor? Unanimous. It is seven fourteen. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.